Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our February 18, 2025 City Council Meeting. Please stand for invocation by Vice Mayor Deemer. Followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, in the vastness of your creation and the mystery of your ways, we come before you acknowledging that you are in control of all things. Your wisdom surpasses our understanding, and your power knows no bounds. In moments of uncertainty and trial, remind us of your divine sovereignty, that you are orchestrating a greater plan for our good and your glory. Thank you for your promise to be with us always, guiding, protecting, and loving us unconditionally. We surrender our lives to you afresh, confident that in your control, we are safe and secure. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into three sections: consent agenda, public comment, and general business. First session is consent agenda. It includes routine items that can be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Second?
Second. Let's vote.
Councilor Prong?
Yes.
Councilor Missions?
Yes.
Councilor Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Bremer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. The next section is public comments. Speakers have three minutes to talk. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. City Council, listen to your comments and may ask the manager to follow up. Citizens often have different opinions. To make sure everyone feels comfortable speaking, there are no applause, cheers, cheers. Do not intimidate, insult, or disrupt others. Do not use profanity, promote business, or campaign for office. First item on the public comment is to hear from citizens regarding SOL scores being shared in the media, requests for future collaboration meeting between council and school board, and highlighting students' lives lost in the last year, and the need for systematic change. Ms. Briggs, may you restate your name and locality?
It's Kathryn Bragg, actually. Hello, good evening.
I'm sorry.
You're totally fine. All right, so I am going to go ahead and just roll into this, all right? So, good evening, City Council. I stand before you as Kathryn Bragg, Assistant Principal at Sandusky Middle School, shaped by the guidance of educators who taught me to stand firm in my beliefs. My principal, Dr. Nitra Lee, gave me the confidence to use my voice even when it trembles. Dr. Derek Brown taught me the power of data-driven decisions. Recently, our SOL scores and accreditation statuses have been circulating on social media. But let's be clear: this is not the data that we are proud of. This is not the city that we want to be. Dr. Brown has also taught me to tackle hard conversations with storytelling. So, let's take a quick teacher moment. Members of the council, would you please raise your hand if you have seen the box office hit "Wicked"? Great, one of you. So, let me just let you know that in the musical "Wicked," Elphaba realizes that the wizard, whom she had once trusted, is actually a fraud. He does not have the power nor desire to strengthen the city of Oz. In response to learning this, Elphaba sings, "I don't want it, and I can't want it anymore." City Council, we can't want this anymore. Rising student deaths, increasing incarceration rates, growing dropout numbers. I want to believe that you, the council members, care about our students and our city. But honestly, the data that you have before you does not reflect this love. Dr. Danny Rule has taught me to approach tough conversations with the two phrases, "I notice and I wonder." Well, Lynchburg City, I notice that we spend a lot of time focused on the political performances in this room. And I wonder what we could accomplish if we focused on real systemic change that aligned with Lynchburg City Schools' mission, to ensure that every student graduates and succeeds. Dr. Casey Jefferson, another leader in Lynchburg City, reminds me that every student can succeed with the right support. But in my role, I have comforted too many families through too many student deaths. Love alone is not enough for our students anymore. Tonight, you are scheduled to discuss Lynchburg City Schools' finances. And while I would love a raise, that's not why I'm here. I'm here to request monthly collaborative committee meetings between City Council, the school board, and local organizations, so we can coordinate the community support services that our students and families so desperately need. In November 2024, you all established the lifelong learning committee. But the public has yet to hear of a single meeting or action item. As Jeff Nitz of 518 Family Services said at a recent 40 Ways Coalition meeting, "Lynchburg is a city that is rich in nonprofits, but we are terrible at coordinating our collaborative efforts. We have the resources, we lack the collaboration." So, I leave you with Elphaba's final words. I'm through accepting limits because someone says they're so. Until we commit to working together, Lynchburg will never see the true potential of our city. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from citizens regarding public safety, animal control, rabies. Could you please state your name and locality, please?
My name is Mary Dietrich, and I live in Lynchburg in Ward 4. The purpose of my visit tonight is to request that the city of Lynchburg increase staffing positions and financing available for animal control. On Sunday, February 2, a skunk viciously attacked my 115-pound dog in my fenced backyard. I called Animal Control for some help to get rid of the skunk, but was told no one was available to work. They were not staffed on the weekends. I did manage to kill the skunk myself, and I'm an old lady, and I did get help for my dog. Unfortunately, I had to wait until Monday for Animal Control to pick up the skunk body in order to get it tested for rabies. I was fortunate in that I was able to kill the skunk, but there are many "what ifs" had the situation been different. Suppose there had been a child involved, and the skunk had attacked the child. And this thing was vicious, and sometimes vicious animals are on the loose. At any rate, for the benefit of the residents of Lynchburg and their families, their pets, and domestic and wild animals in the area, I would like for you to please consider staffing and funding increases for animal control. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from citizens regarding safety in Lynchburg schools. Is Ms. Wilson here? Okay, moving on. We now hear from a group representative regarding the resigning of school board members and streetlights in Ward 2, Robert Flood. Mr. Flood is not here. Now hear from citizen regarding is Lynchburg listed as a sanctuary city because of reasonable jail policy? Mr. Peter Sepharati.
Sepharati. Keep practicing, Larry. Okay, was my time running here? Okay, Peter Sepharati, citizen of Lynchburg, taxpayer. I read about this story online, this online story about the jail and having some kind of sanctuary practices, and how that might be jeopardizing funding for this city for whatever. I mean, I don't know if that's going to happen, I don't know if it's likely, but I've kind of been asking around about it and haven't heard a darn thing about that. And it seems kind of like an interesting concept for citizens and taxpayers to know if our regional jail has been running in a way that's going to jeopardize our share of government funding that we pay other taxes to get back in our pockets. Be pleased to know if somebody has looked at, if that's a non-issue, if it is an issue, if it is an issue, is it being worked on? Sounds pretty important to me, especially with people focusing on fraud and abuse and waste in government these days. I attended the joint school board, City Council meeting today, and it sounds like we are facing a dire situation, and some would say it's been like that way for a while. Please use your utmost efforts to see that we qualify for the maximum funding from state and federal governments, so that at least we're going to get some money to handle the problems. I was pleased to hear Councilman Deemer bring up the lowly taxpayers, mention them as partners in the government and the bureaucracies in funding the school improvements that need to be made. This is a good idea. It'll be much easier to get citizen buy-in, taxpayer buy-in, for whatever ideas you come up with, especially if it's going to mean them taking their wallets out and squeezing them harder. I think it's going to be a better idea for you folks to get cooperation of every person who is part of this domain, if you want to put it that way, to work together as a team. They might not agree with everything, but not many teams agree on everything. But coach calls the plays, the quarterback takes them out there, everybody takes their position and do their best to make the play be successful. That's what we're looking for, that's what we need to have. Be a lot easier to get the taxpayers on board with that if you can come to them with concrete ideas, and this includes the school board too, concrete ideas on whatever changes you're going to make, showing proven track record, showing that you consulted with other communities that have had the same problems and overcame them, show the people that some actual thought went into this, and that we can rely on the money being used that we're going to get a really good return on investment, which means graduate students that know how to read, write, do math, get a job, and support their community like we're doing it. I'm all for that, and I would spend more money, more money to do that. But you got to convince me that your ideas are going to lead to that before you ask me to write a bigger check. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We will now hear from Mr. Robert Flood.
I apologize for being late, it's hard to find a parking space.
Could you please restate your name and locality, please?
Yes, my name is Robert Flood, and I'm speaking on behalf of Rescuers of the Youth. I think about a couple of years ago, we was talking about putting lights up in different locations in Ward 2. And at nighttime, sometime I ride around to different areas, and we want to put cameras up around everybody's houses, just in case something happens, so we could see what's going on. My question is, how can we put up lights, I mean, put up cameras, when the light's not working? All around Ward 2, lights are out down Cam Avenue. You can't even tell what's going on if somebody, especially elder people, come out. They're not going to stay on the porch for too long when they didn't know the camera and the lights, streetlights are not doing work. That's what I talked about a couple of years ago, and it's still the same thing going on today. And the second thing that I wanted to talk about, talked about a precinct in Ward 2 two years ago. I ain't hear nothing, because elder people like to come home, sit on their porch in the summertime, and not worry about a bunch of crazy stuff like we have today in Lynchburg. And the third thing is, I mentioned it, I think it was last week, y'all had a meeting here about a situation. I've been working with young people off and on for 30 years, and we always try to tell them the right thing to do. We had a young man, I can't think of his name, that's on the school board, that admitted that he done something wrong. And he's over top of a lot of young people, and they do something wrong, he punished them. And I think y'all elected him because he was the best candidate to sit on the school board. He was smart, intelligent, whatever it was, but he done something dumb. But y'all campaigned for him, some of y'all are. In a sense, why? If somebody else, different, or looked like me, would have done something like that and took and put a black face on a white person's face at the school board, we would have been harled about all year long. Why I got to come to this? He said he wanted to resign if y'all decided. For some reason, he backed out. Right is right and wrong is wrong, all us Christians supposed to be. Right and wrong, ain't nothing in between. We do the right thing by letting, you know, telling them, hey, you got to go. Or we keep him there. What kind of super tino coming here, all this mess going on? This is 2025, and we started again, from last year. All this confusion with the school board, I think this thing like to bite people. But the thing about it, why? Why we start in 2025 like we ended, 2024, 23? Fussing, arguing about stuff, the taxpayers pay y'all money to do your job. Ain't it right? You know, so we need to do our job, you know, do the right thing. What's so hard? Forget politics. What's so hard to doing the right thing? And push this person, he could find another job. You know, he was smart, intelligent, and y'all chose him because y'all thought he was the best candidate. And look what happened. But I don't think he done it by himself. This is my opinion. How do some stay up there for six days and nobody recognize when you got cameras all in the administration building? Something ain't right about that picture. So, we got to start 2025 better than we ended 2024. We are so divided, it's ridiculous. And we talk, but how we don't come together and put our differences aside and do what we need to do for the city called Lynchburg? How can we do that? We keep on going back and forth with this crazy stuff. It's time to come together and show the people why they voted you in and do your job. That's everybody. So, that's what I came to speak about today. And I hope y'all look at them lights, you know, in different areas, because people don't like to walk in the street when the streetlight's off. And all of a sudden, you got cameras on everybody's houses. What's the use of putting cameras up when you ain't got no streetlights up?
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now hear from citizen regarding school board's concerns, Ms. Cyril Calathien. Is Ms. Calathien here? Okay. Now hear from group representative regarding thank you and encouragement, Greg Berry, elders of the city. Hear from citizen regarding Christian DePaul, Ms. Charlotte Mason. Hear from a citizen regarding the resigning of a school board member, Mr. Aaron Reed.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Reed, and I live in the 24503 zip code. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of City Council, good evening. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Aaron Reed, and I come to you tonight as an employee of your school division. I'm a 27-year veteran currently working at EC Glass High School. I'm a graduate of Lynchburg City Schools. I graduated from EC Glass in 1994, or as my students call it, the 1900s. I am the chair of the English department. I am a co-coach of the award-winning competitive public speaking team at my school, and last year, the Virginia High School League named me the Speech Educator of the Year for the State of Virginia. So, talking in speeches is something that I know about. I'm also a faculty council member for my school's chapter of the National Honor Society, and this is appropriate tonight because it is about honor that I wish to speak to you. Earlier this month, a school board member, Mr. DePaul, admitted to placing an inappropriate and objectively rude picture in the placeholder of our interim superintendent, Dr. Ben Copeland. This picture hangs in the school board room on Court Street. This is a public room, a public forum for public interaction. He says he did it as, quote, "a joke." He didn't mean for it to get out of hand, and after news broke, he stated publicly that he cared about a decorum of professionalism and that he needed to lead by example. He respects his relationship with Dr. Copeland and claims that he has apologized to the interim superintendent both publicly and privately. But tonight, I want you to consider the possibility that Dr. Copeland was not the only person offended or affected by this action. I mentioned to you earlier that I am the faculty council advisor for the National Honor Society at my school. This means that I and other members of the staff review the applications of hundreds of juniors every year to join that August group. Students who are not admitted to this society have committed any number of transgressions, from academic fraud to behavior infractions to school day disruptions. I submit to you today that if Mr. DePaul were a 16-year-old student at EC Glass applying to the National Honor Society, he would not be inducted. Because honor involves not just one's words, but one's actions, and consequences matter. By his own admission, Mr. DePaul wanted to bring a firmer hand to discipline reviews conducted by Lynchburg City Schools. By one internal estimate, the Discipline Committee has expelled more students this year than in the past five years combined. This means that Mr. DePaul's vision of discipline is a zero-tolerance one. I say to you again, consequences matter. He has been stripped of his leadership, but isn't it the honor of serving on the school board that we need to address today? I need you to speak to him about resigning. Thank you.
We now hear from a group representative regarding school board and our kids, Ms. Colleen
I really wish I didn't have to follow him. He's always an excellent speaker. My name is Colleen Larkins, I live in Ward 4, and I'm representing Save Our Schools. I originally had tonight on my agenda to talk to you about the budget. As we go into the budget season, schools are a big topic of conversation. It broke my heart when I had to change topics because of what has happened in the coming past weeks. The same week that the situation with Christian DePaul happened, the school board and the school and the committees were talking to the community about what a new superintendent needed to have, what qualities, what vision. We talked about what is great about Lynchburg City Schools and where we're struggling. Community members from all different walks of life and all political spectrums came to share their thoughts and opinions. But that very same week, actually, that very same night that the school board was talking about what he did, we were in sessions talking to our community. We are looking for a new superintendent, and the city will tell you that we need someone who is a visionary leader. You told the search committee that, too. We need someone who's strong, we need someone who understands our demographic, we need somebody who can unite us. But yet, while that was happening, we were allowing somebody to disrespect our current superintendent. And then the chaos that happened in this room afterwards was not okay. The facts are the facts, he was disrespectful. Our superintendent didn't find it funny, he didn't think it was a joke. Action should have been taken, and to those of you who spoke out and said it wasn't appropriate and were going to take action, thank you. Because we cannot let this be the focus of Lynchburg City Schools. There is too much at stake here. For the last 18 months, we have stood in this room, parents have begged and pleaded with you, community members have begged and pleaded with you to work together for a better future, and some of you have listened, and for that, we are so grateful. We thank you for finding creative solutions. We need that to continue. But what superintendent is going to want to come and be part of dysfunction? What superintendent is going to want to come when they are not stood up for? Our children deserve so much. Our children deserve so much better. They deserve leadership that works together. They deserve people in this room and on our school board that will advocate for our children. Do you know why things are going around the internet about Lynchburg City Schools being a failure time and time again? Because of things said in this room by people in this room that sit in your spots? That's why. That's why when I put my kids in Lynchburg City Schools, I was told to be careful. Watch out, your kids are gonna get terrible education. It's been anything but. So Lynchburg City, hear me when I say our schools are not failing. They have some struggles. They have some struggles. But you can be a part of changing that. You can, and so can our public. I'm just gonna echo the words of my son's assistant principal, who's awesome, by the way. We need to come together. We need to stop playing games. We need to stop playing games with our babies. A child who is not proficient in reading by fourth grade will end up incarcerated or on welfare. So for those of you who are fiscally wanna talk about the taxpayers' money, it is cheaper to pay for a child's education than it is to pay for them to be in jail. For them to be incarcerated, it costs six times what it costs to educate them. So we either get to be part of their success or part of their demise. Is that the legacy that you want? To be part of their demise? You need to fund these schools. You need to deal with Christian DePaul. And we need to move forward as united front because our babies are too important not to.
Thank you. We're now here from a citizen regarding finance committee and federal grant guidelines. Mr. Jeff Rosner.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Rosner, citizen of Lynchburg. A February 6th Finance Committee agenda item was review updated federal grant guidelines. A presidential executive order on diversity, equity, and inclusion, or DEI, was attached to the item. This executive order does not require any changes to the city's DEI policies or programs. It does not prevent the city from receiving federal grants. The part that was highlighted in the agenda attachment says a federal grant recipient must, quote, certify that it does not operate any programs promoting DEI that violate any applicable federal anti-discrimination laws, unquote. So the city would not have to certify that it has no DEI programs. It would only have to certify that its DEI programs do not violate federal law. The city's Equal Opportunity Plan, which includes its diversity and inclusion plan, does not contain anything that violates any federal laws. Also, on the legal status of DEI in general, a 2023 Supreme Court case on college admissions raised issues similar to DEI. The court ruled against Harvard and the University of North Carolina. But the court also said some admission programs could consider race. So the court would probably allow some DEI programs in future cases. And finally, I hope that the public is aware that there may be a DEI issue on the February 25th Finance Committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we hear from a citizen regarding needs for more public housings in Lynchburg. Ms. Sarah Bonner. Bonner.
Good evening. Sarah Bonner, Ward One. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Prior to moving back here in 2017, I worked, I lived in Roanoke. I studied at Radford University, getting my degree in social work. I'm also an Air Force veteran. I worked with many veterans who were homeless, were at risk of being for homeless. And I also worked at the Rest Commission and I was a student intern. A requirement that we all had was to spend the night as if we're homeless at the shelter. This was incredibly eye-opening and humbling. Stories are heard, were life-altering. I can tell you a lot of stories. Coming back here, I was hoping to be part of a change to make things better for folks who have mental illness and coexisting substance abuse diagnosis. However, the biggest need I found was home housing. Tonight, it's cold. We're expecting snow tomorrow. Last week, our meeting was canceled because of snow. In December, it was cold, and January was cold, and we had opening a warming shelter. I volunteered along with some of our dedicated human services team. We learned from a member of the fire department that between the end of December and the beginning of January, two individuals in Lynchburg were found frozen to death. Frozen to death. I've seen a lot of needs for housing, a lot of shelters, but very few housing opportunities. Please work, I'm challenging all of you to please work with our wonderful team of human services, the Salvation Army, Miriam's House, and our other community partners such as our churches, our universities, to stop this from happening. No one in Lynchburg, no one in America, no one in the world should be frozen to death. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from a group representative regarding items on the agenda. Reverend Josh Pratt, Action Mixon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council members, brothers and sisters in Christ.
If you please state your name and locality, please.
My name is Joshua Daniel Pratt, Lynchburg, Virginia, Ward Three, 24502.
Thank you, sir.
Please restart my time.
Thank you, sir.
This evening, as we sat here and heard, requests for more money, more spending, and please don't cut programs. I sit and I ask the question to city council. The leadership that has been in place in Lynchburg for the past 25 years, previous to the last city council, led this city, and yet today, we're standing here saying the schools are failing. What went wrong? Why are the schools failing? Why are the test scores where they're at? Why is it that we want to spend more money teaching children diversity, equity, and inclusion, but yet they're failing at math, English, and science? Is it a problem with the staffing? Is it a problem with the superintendent? Is it a problem with the leadership? When I hear people in the community say, "It's your fault, city council, that our schools are failing," I don't agree. It's not city council's fault that the schools have failed our children and our community. And the answer is not to throw more money at it. It's not to spend more money on buildings. It's not to use the resources of the city in a way that expands the tax base of the citizens. A good business audits itself. I call for a full audit of the school system, asking that every accountable measure be made to look into how the money is being spent. Businesses that are successful produce results. Results are merit-based. You succeed, you prosper. You fail, you go out of business. Throwing more money at this situation is not the solution. Building more buildings is not the solution. But a detailed investigation to what's gone on in the past 25 years in this city would be a really good place to start, to identify where the problem is. And then develop a plan, as I heard people saying tonight, with the community, with the community, in regards to how we as a community can come together. Conservatives, Democrats, the church, the non-church, the entire community can come together with these facts and agree upon on how we can make our education system better. And it's absolutely true what she said. It's less expensive to educate a child than it is to provide for incarceration. The statistics are clear. Reading by the fourth grade, if not achieved, will lead to that. That's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. My son goes to a school here in Lynchburg where it's a three-to-one ratio. New Vista's. How are they able to do that? How are they able to educate children in a three-to-one ratio? But yet, we say our classrooms are overstuffed at 30-to-1, 25-to-1, 21-to-1. But yet, New Vista's finances are comparable to what the city school is. Yet, we have more students stuffed into the classrooms here in the city schools than we do in the private schools. What's the difference? In addition to calling for a full audit of the system, I'm asking city council to seriously consider the efforts that Lieutenant Governor Winsome Sears has made to bring about school choice. Let the money follow the child. Let the parents decide what the education is going to be for the child. Parents know best. Parents know what their children need better than educators who want to tell parents how to educate. Let the parents decide. Let the money follow the child. Bring about charter schools. Bring about private schools. If you wanna create a school that's LGBT-only, do it. You wanna bring about a school that's religious in nature and honors Jesus Christ, then do it. If you want a sectarian school, then let it happen. But let the parents choose. So two things. Audit the system, find the problems, and fix it. Number two, be considerate to vouchers, school choice, and letting the money follow the child. Thank you for your time tonight, and God bless you all. May you continue to serve this city well.
Thank you. We now hear from citizen regarding finance committee attempt to assert a line item veto power. Mr. Michael Bremer.
Good evening. I'm Michael Bremer. I reside in Ward Four. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Councilmember Missions is attempting to assume responsibility of professional staff and council regarding Lynchburg's budget. This power grab is designed to give the finance committee a line item veto over select budget items and usurp the authority of council. According to the 2022 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, quote, "The city council is responsible for all city funding recommendations. Ultimately, funding for housing and nonprofit providers is coordinated through city council," end quote. Mr. Missions has questioned the value of two nonprofit organizations committed to improving Lynchburg's downtown and business climate. He has made comments that disparage downtown Lynchburg and its vibrant retail and entertainment activities. Mr. Missions says he wants to examine the return on investment of tax dollars granted to these nonprofits. Let's look. To facilitate Bright Nights event, the Downtown Lynchburg Association received a $75,000 grant from the Commonwealth and received $80,000 in private donations, quote, "to assist the city in infrastructure and electrical upgrades and improvements downtown." The result? 8,000 visitors to downtown, supporting more than 60 businesses, and many of those visitors were from out of town. The 25 budget allocates $2.1 million for economic development and tourism. The Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance has brought in $89 million in capital investments and aided in creating more than 700 new jobs, helping to retain and expand more than 20 businesses. LRBA helps the city retain younger business leaders and advocates for our region at the General Assembly. In '23, the DLA reported that local meals tax revenue saw a 7.8% increase over '22, contributing more than $29 million. State sales tax revenue increased by 6.6%. Local amusement tax revenue collected nearly $2 million, a 20% increase. Local lodging tax revenue increased by 3.2%, contributing nearly $10 million to the city. Overall visitation increased by 7% over '22. I'd say that's a pretty positive return on investment. DLA and LRBA play crucial roles in continuing the effort to attract businesses and visitors to sustain our downtown. Why would we jeopardize that? This is not just shenanigans, as Mayor Taylor has called it. It is a continuation of disrespect of the professional city staff. I urge you as members of this council to reject the revisions to the finance committee's guidelines. Thank you for your time.
Our next section is general business.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. A little bit different for this evening under general business because of inclement weather and other things. We've had to move around. We had earlier this evening, for those viewing from home and also here in the chambers, we got to meet with the school board. And this very handsomely dressed gentleman to my right, his name is Jeff Bandy. He's our city assessor. And so what would normally be a work session topic, we've moved, because of timing, we're moving into the budget season. If you remember the budget calendar, the 25th of this month, we're gonna talk about the capital improvement plan, followed by then the proposal that I will make about the city's budget. As part of all of this, the city assessor pursuant to state code performs every other year a reassessment of your property values. So you may see Jeff and his team out and about in our city with iPads, making sure and looking at valuations, right? Because we've seen in the last couple of years growth in our city, which is a good thing. And part of that opportunity is done by Jeff in his office as a real estate assessor. I'll say he does not make the market, he follows the market. And so most of this evening is just generally pursuant to state code, the process that he performs every other year. What he has seen, maybe some market trends poses some questions to you. Know that as part of this process, in our discussions, we'll talk about real estate, where it is, and some other elements. We talked about some of that at your retreat, if you recall. And then at some point specific, there is going to be a public hearing about, not just simply the budget, but also about real estate. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. And with that, sir, I introduce to you our real estate assessor, Jeff Bandy.
Mr. Bandy.
Good evening.
Yes, sir. If I may, and I mean no disrespect.
Yeah.
There are items for our consideration that have folks in the audience.
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm assuming there's gonna be some questions for Mr. Bandy related to this. And I would hate for us to have to rush through those questions.
Sure.
And discussion. So would it be prudent? And I can go either way, it doesn't matter. But would it be prudent to take care of those items first and then come to Mr. Bandy at the end? That way, we can make sure we're asking those questions. I can go either way, just a recommendation.
Mike?
I think that we should move forward. I think the fact that there's a potential 15% tax increase on our citizens to real estate in reassessments is probably something prudent for people to see in prime time hours this evening.
Mr. Mayor, it's the will of the council. We can reconfigure the agenda or whatever, whatever the spirit.
Okay.
We losing?
I think it's prudent to continue.
Well, this must have been. Can we move you to the end?
Of course.
We hear the others and then?
Of course. Whatever, it's your pleasure.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item. Consider adopting a resolution amending future land use map and adopting an ordinance approving rezoning and adopting resolution approving conditional use permit and allowing 88 townhomes and associate parking at 750 Leesville Road. This item was tabled December 10th meeting. May I have a motion to approve future land use map? May we have a motion?
I move for approval.
A second.
Second. End of discussion.
Speak to the motion. During the presentation from last time, and also I've talked to Mr. Developer, and he's, him and some other residents came forward as well, had another meeting with the residents to address some of their concerns. I think it was rate property. Yeah. To address some of their concerns, to make sure, I think it was some questions about traffic and some other issues that they had. other issues that they had reservations about. So they did make some alterations, adjustments to that. So I feel comfortable that he's made efforts with the residents in the area to listen to their concerns, listen to their voices. Thank you.
Yes, likewise. Mr. Maddox, if you would come forward. So I'll speak to my second and then also ask you a question, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So I agree. I know we had some concerns that were addressed and you were asked to kind of go back and address. I know you've done a great job in previous things, developments that you've taken on, being really great with your neighbors and addressing their concerns, which we really appreciate about you, which is why I was glad you went back. And I know you did the same thing in our conversation. It sounds like you did that again. So would you address what you went back and did and the response that you got?
So last December, thank you for your time. Thank you for calling me back up. Last time I was challenged by Jeff to go back and look at it again. It did the same thing to me before with the Travel Lodge when we redid that, working with our neighbors there. So I took that to heart, and as soon as we left, we met in the hall with the opposition. Mr. Herb is here, Mr. Harrison is here. In front of us, Mr. Harrison's concerned about traffic. Behind us, Mr. Herb's concerned about water runoff. So we decided to kind of, give me some time, let's get through the holidays and let's get back together and go from there. So I approached them in first of January, and then I was invited to come to Lakeland Association on their, one of their meetings. So I showed up. You know, Mr. DeMire was there too, so it was interesting. I told my part of what I wanted to do, and it was a great conversation. And it actually, the challenge made me look at it from a different point of view. So not only was I trying to improve the property that we're looking at on 750 Leesville, but I was also thinking I was doing something better for the city. But I didn't really look at it from the downstream point of view. So what I heard was that we have a lake. It was built here in the sixties, and we're trying to figure out how to maintain the lake and how to take care of it. But they're just overwhelmed with regulations and then budgetary concerns too. So it was obvious to me that I need to be a part of solution there. So what we did is I made some suggestions and I asked them to give me a little bit of time and went back. We ended up entering into a private agreement between the association and myself. If we do get approved and move forward, then again, I want to be a part of the solution. And if I put anything sediment in the pond, I would pay for that upfront and then also a stipend on top of that to help them with their maintenance going forward. So I thought that was a fair solution with them, and they accepted that. And if you guys decide to move forward with this, we'll certainly follow through with that. Traffic, on the other hand, I don't know that I can do anything about that, but I did do the research. And ultimately, what's going to happen is, should happen, from the low end of the spectrum is maybe look at reducing speed through there, maybe more enforcement through there. But a little bit more controversial on the other side of the spectrum, there was actually a study done for the city about ten years ago. It's referred to as the diet plan. And what they proposed was taking the four lanes and converting it to a bike lane, a single lane, a turning lane, single lane, bike lane. Because in my opinion, and I think, you know, a lot of people agree that the size of the road is very sufficient, but because of the lack of traffic, people easily can just blow around people in speed, and it's easier because it's long straightways and that type of thing. But also, when you make a left-hand turn anywhere on Leesville Road, you got to navigate four lanes. Not only the four lanes with no turning lane, but also potential of somebody speeding through there. So my recommendation to the city, whether I get approved or not, is to look at Leesville from a traffic standpoint, because that is a concern. People do blow through there, you know, and it's policing it or redoing it. So, yep.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Maddox, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
I appreciated getting to know you through this process. I had lots of concerns. I heard from a lot of citizens, both in the Lakeland area as well as people that will be your neighbors right there on Leesville Road, about traffic and about runoff, those two main things. I've been over there a few times during the recent storms and rain, and we've had some excessive rain lately. I don't know if you've noticed.
Yes, sir.
Within the snow and the ice. And there are some runoff problems that are going on. Obviously, that's not you, because you haven't done anything yet. Will you exacerbate the problem? That remains to be seen. Everything I've heard from you indicates you're going to be part of a solution because of the ponds you're building and redirecting the water that way. But we have bonds in case it doesn't. And your extra efforts to provide additional funding also are above and beyond. The one association meeting I attended with you, I got the impression that I've told everybody that when I left, I thought they liked you better than they liked me. So...
You're a politician.
You're doing a great job. You should run for office or something, because they did. I think they appreciate that you currently aren't part of the current problem and that you're doing everything in your power to try not to exacerbate what is an existing problem with runoff going into that area. And I've had some conversations with city staff about that, because I think there are some things that can be done about the runoff problems. Regarding the traffic problem, I studied that as well as you, and I saw the grades that it gave the situation, given the new central health construction right across the red. It's not great, but it's not horrible. The grades were pretty acceptable and pretty much far away from requiring more than you've already offered, which is turn lanes and other things to help fix that problem, and I appreciate those extra efforts on your part as well. Like you, I think that some of this could be addressed, and I see our city police chief is in the room tonight with additional enforcement of speeds on Leesville Road. I can tell you, getting out of my neighborhood, it gets really interesting, and I'm used to driving in DC and Richmond. But getting out of North Street, sometimes a little interesting at high-traffic times. But what you've done is good. I'm appreciative of your efforts, and I think if all the developers worked the way you do, I think, you know, it'd be a lot easier in the city to do some great things. So again, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Is it Ms. Timmer?
Thank you. I don't want to be too redundant to the conversation of council, but I do just want to affirm the general appreciation for how you've worked to be a part of solutions to problems that pre-existed the question of this build. And in our discussion, I was very impressed not only by the intentionality of the retaining ponds and some of those sorts of things, but actually working to protect people's views that they've had for an extended period of time. And so that spoke to me about your care for the community. So there's a whole long list of details and things that you have gone through that have been able to give us a level of reassurance. But I did just want to mention that component as well, because that's very personal and that's a great thing to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
End of more discussion. Mr. Missions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all I got.
That's it.
Mr. Ferrari?
Sorry, we're playing some phone tag. It's been a little busy. To the staff, if this does pass, I would submit that either one or two streetlights intersections in the future are warranted, and I would ask that we do consider that in future implementation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maddox. If there's no more discussion, let's vote.
Councilmember Ferrari?
Yes.
Okay. I'm so sorry. Give me one second. Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, sir. May I have a motion on the rezoning?
Sir, move.
Second. End of discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Ferrari?
There's going to be three votes, is that correct? Yes, thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes. May I have a motion on the approval of the conditional use permit?
Sir, move. Second.
End of discussion?
No discussion.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Ferrari?
Sorry, I'm just making sure I'm doing my votes right. Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Next on the agenda. Review and approve the city council's Physical Development Committee PDC guidelines. This item went on our Physical Development Committee on January 14th and will, and I will defer to the chair of that committee, Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Physical Development Committee guidelines are essentially the same as before, so I'm happy to go through questions and defer to staff on some of those questions, but it passed unanimously within PDC.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Ferrari?
Were there any changes to the document?
There were none.
Any more discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Ferrari?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Second reading consideration of adopting resolution number R-25-005, amending the physical year 2025 general fund budget and appropriating $86,106 from the general fund for contingency to provide additional demolition funds, funding. This is the second reading. May I have a motion?
Sir, move.
Second.
End of discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion? Let's vote.
Actually, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
You can see.
I know this is our second reading. However, since our first reading, I spoke to Dr. Wilder and I've spoken to the mayor, both who were at the PDC meeting when we originally unanimously voted to do the full funding for five homes for the demolition, which was, I think, $116,000 is what we allocated, again, with a unanimous vote. Then when we did our first reading, then it went to finance, and one home was taken out. So after our first reading, you know, I was a little confused. I spoke to Dr. Wilder. He had actually voted against that, and then I spoke to the mayor, and he did not agree that that should have been taken out, but he doesn't have a vote in the Finance Committee meeting. So I would like to make a substitute motion that we go back to the original decision that the PDC committee made to do the original amount we allocated for all five homes for the $116,000, because I would think that normally what should have happened is if the Finance Committee meeting, the Finance Committee had not agreed with what the PDC Committee had unanimously voted on, that there should have been some discussion for things were overruled and we voted. But we didn't catch that at the last meeting, and that's fine. So my substitute motion is that we allocate $116,000, or if we have the exact amount. Alicia, do you have that?
Yeah, I think it's just 116, 160.
116, 160. Okay, so my substitute motion is that we allocate $116,160 from our general fund reserve for contingencies to provide for the additional demolition funding to demolish all five homes that were originally discussed and unanimously voted for in our PDC meeting.
I'll second the motion.
And I don't need to speak to my motion, because I pretty much said everything I would already say.
No additional comments.
No additional comments? Mr. Dean?
Point of inquiry about, since we passed the motion the first time, the amount of $86,000, does this now constitute the second first time and we'll have to vote on it again?
No, I think you all are okay if you decide to proceed with the 116, 160. When city council does the initial reading, it did come, as I recall, it didn't come as 86,000, but came at 116, was changed to be approved or introduced as 86, and then came back as the 86 amount. So you all are probably okay with this being the second reading and the approval.
Okay. What's the mission?
So the reason that $30,000 was pulled out for the property on 1013 Hemlock Street, if we could, do we have anybody here that's able to present on that, why that was pulled out? For the actual, what the issues were with the 1013 Hemlock Street property? It was quite different what was explained about why this was being proposed for demolition versus the other ones. The other ones were considered actual public safety threats, so to speak, and unstable. Is that correct, Rachel?
So I was not at that meeting. It was Mr. Martin, who's unfortunately out of town today. My understanding is what was relayed from that committee is that the committee wanted to give the owner more time to respond to the city's process for...
That's right. So the $30,000 that was pulled out was to prevent the city from appropriating those funds out of our general fund reserve for contingency to be able to demolish a home that was just reported to us that it had foundation issues. And, you know, I think that that's, it's prudent for us to understand more what that meant. I asked that question. There was no information, any additional information given to me about what those foundation issues were. And I just don't think that it's wise for us to be in the habit of just tearing people's homes down, whether it's occupied or vacant, you know, that doesn't matter. It's still somebody's property. So that's why we pulled that 30,000 out. I'll be voting against this substitute motion. Our general fund reserve for contingency shouldn't be, you know, necessarily used in this manner to fund these toolkit issues. The only reason I supported the other ones was because they were unstable public safety threats, and I can appreciate that if it's a safety threat to our citizens, but a foundation that is, whatever the issues were that weren't reported in any detail whatsoever, doesn't constitute a public safety threat.
Mr. Ferrari?
I am supporting the substitute, because it is not in the purview of Finance Committee to decide on which specific homes should have been considered or not. Rather, it was supposed to consider the full appropriation, yes or no, and not decide which house they preferred. That's why it's went to Physical Development Committee and not Finance at the start. I would hope our Finance Committee would understand its proper role in the future.
Mr. Wilder?
Oh, if I may, I'm so sorry. I did forget one piece. My apologies. This is why I voted against every item at the last meeting, is because there were questions about numbers regarding this very committee that didn't even finish its full agenda, and it just caused concern for the rest of the items. But my apologies, Dr. Wilder.
And I was just going by the recommendation of the city staff. I know we didn't show the picture of the property, but if you could see the property, it's a hazard to our community. If you could see anyone might go into this property, it's probably it's boarded up, but like it's about to fall down. So... So, um, if you live next door to that property, you wouldn't want that property next door to your house. You know, then, and by understanding, there's a process to try to recoup the funds from the homeowners. I know it's challenging, but there's a process in place to try to do that. But again, you want to have a community that looks decent, and to have a house next door to this would be a travesty, thank you.
Ms. Timmer?
Is there the opportunity to pull up the house in question, the picture of the house in question from the prior?
Somebody, somebody more skilled than I am making sure that that happens.
Okay.
Looks like Dr. Wilder was able to do it pretty well.
It's on the, it's on our package.
Okay, is it able to come up on the screen? Thank you.
Don't go snooping.
You're a senior.
Yeah, thank you.
USBC or USBA, your choice? It's not on that thumb drive.
You said it's not on here?
No, I said I can put it on the thumb drive and give it to you.
That's what I thought you were doing.
Yeah.
No, I didn't do it yet. I thought you were, I can do it for you real quick.
Could I motion for a brief recess and we can...
It's on our package.
I think the citizens should see the house.
Let's see, come on, Kent. Somebody jump up and do this.
We got it. We got it.
I think the citizens deserve to see what we're tearing down.
Thank you all for doing that, I'll, I'll ask my questions while they're pulling that up.
Okay.
So, I, I'm not sure, and, um, Councilmember Farady mentioned questions when it comes to the purview of the Finance Committee versus Council, Councilmember Reed mentioned questions as far as how this has proceeded forward. Again, speaks to a lot of, um, continued questions as far as process. But my, my question specifically regarding this property is that this house was intact. So I, I did approve it in the PDC Committee, I'm not necessarily opposed to approving it now, but I would like to better understand the implications of this demolition. Is it, are the foundation issues because it's at a raised elevation? Are the foundation issues more of a concern because of its proximity to other structures? Why this particular property and the timeline surrounding it?
Okay.
Thank you.
I will talk, speak to that. I drove over to Hemlock Street. I looked at the foundation. The front of the house is sitting on dirt. The back of the house is sitting on dirt. That tells me that the floors are gone. And it's just sitting there. The front porch has dropped down. I'm a construction worker, I know. I have bought houses like that and tore them apart myself. This, this house need to be demoed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's very helpful for consideration.
And I will say during the presentation at Finance Committee, Tom Martin's, uh, comments were, there are foundation issues. It could be an issue where it collapses tomorrow. It could be fine for a number of years. It's hard to tell, but I think, uh, Mr. Taylor's, Mayor's comments are, uh, probably far more telling than, than that.
Is it at a raised elevation? I'm sorry, I know I'm not necessarily...
It's not, it, it's, it's sitting on the ground.
Well, it, it's...
The, 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 the brick, the brick foundation is gone. There's a house right over on Monroe Street where the back chimney fell off this past week. A lot of times when they constructed these old houses, they put the brick right on the ground. And the old clay brick, and the moisture get into those bricks and they just deteriorate. And that's what you got there. It's sitting on the ground. Turnmites and everything else has eaten the wood. I got out of my truck, went over there and looked.
Thank you.
Yes. And it's a fire hazard. When, for some reason here in Lynchburg of late, when people abandon houses, people see them, they go in, they try to get warm, and it's at the house on fire. Two houses on Florida Avenue. One right beside, uh, White Rock Baptist Church. Yes, sir.
I appreciate your expertise in this area, Mr. Mayor. Couple points. The first is, is this the purview of the Finance Committee? And, and since there was $30,000 involved, it's clearly the purview of the Finance Committee or it wouldn't have been in there. The second point is, I too have traveled around to all of the properties that were proposed. And there was a stark difference in this property, okay? I, I visited with Tom Martin, who's the Director of our, uh, planning, and, uh, was able to see all the properties that were being proposed for demolition. The stark difference with this one is if, I don't know if you could pull up the other ones, but even in the picture, it's fairly obvious that, uh, this house is intact. The other houses were in a, in a much greater visible, uh, state of disrepair. If you could go through some of them, I mean, you know, okay? These other houses, i- is, is pretty clear. There's no, there's no fixing that. Keep going. I mean, there, that's, that's not repairable. It's certainly a hazard. It's a fire. And then you got this one. And that's a house that's, uh, got windows and it's got doors and it's got a porch and it's got a roof and it's got walls. And yes, it may have, it may have some bad bones. Um, I'm, I, I understand real estate and bad bones are a bad thing. But that's what stood out to me, I actually visited, I don't know how many of y'all got a chance to visit those houses, I know you did, Mr. Mayor.
Blow that, can you blow that, uh, right corner up, that left cor, well, right corner on that house?
I don't want to prolong this any longer than possible, but I wanted to make sure, uh, everybody understood why this one stood out a little bit. Clearly, it needs some work.
See that foundation gone right there?
Let me, let me, let me just finish, Mr. Missions. I just, uh, I just saw it as very different than the others, and it has not, uh, met certain criteria that all the other ones met. And when I saw it come up, uh, when you tear down someone's home, that's not reversible. You can't undo that. That's pretty significant. And when the power of government steps in and tears down a human being's property for whatever the reason may be that's deemed correct, there's no building that back. There's no, oh, oops, uh, you know, let's fix that back. So I just wanted to be sure. And I think my fellow Councilmember also wanted to be sure. And all this did was give us a little extra time to look at it. And, uh, we certainly can bring it up again. But hopefully the homeowner's paying attention. And if, if not, I know we've tried to reach out to him and they haven't, but if they're paying attention to all these other ones we're, we're tearing down, maybe they'll step forward and say, you know, I just inherited $50,000 and I'm going to fix that. Maybe not, it might be a pipe dream. But, uh, before we do something that's absolutely irreversible to a house that doesn't look like, I feel like it's like Sesame Street, which one doesn't belong? This one didn't really belong in that list.
Ms. Reed?
I was kind of insulted for, on behalf of our mayor, who's proficient in livelihood is building, and that we're challenging him. No one else up here is a carpenter by trade, builder by trade. And he literally just told us all what his expert eye and crafts, like, hands, building hands saw. And we're like, mm, I hear you, but no. How insulting. Regardless of my relationship with Mr. Missions, I still listen to his opinion of fire issues because I know he has experience there that I don't have. Are we really challenging the mayor's? No, it sounds like we are. I would like to call the question. Please let's vote. Let's vote.
Mr. Farady?
Okay. I have to take a break. I've counted, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, I would submit to the Vice Mayor, who's sitting on the Finance Committee. I've counted how many times the Vice Mayor has said he's new, I'm learning. It's been every single meeting. So if I'm going to be lectured on what the role of Finance Committee or not, I think I'll take my five years over your two months. Mr. Mayor, I would also submit, as a professional in this space, I sold a home off of Ellen Drive in Campbell County. If you were to pull this address up, and the reason I'm not going to is because I want to protect my client's name and information, in this instance, house looks great, much better than this on Hemlock Street. Sure enough, you get to the inspection, something that wasn't disclosed to any party, by golly, there's $10,000 worth of financial issues on that house. So as another professional who lives in this industry, this needs to go. Now, the question of, is it the role of government or not? That's not what the purpose of this substitute motion is for. The substitute motion is to include it. Conversation should be left to that. So I would, I would agree with Ms. Reed, yes, we should call the question. And then if you want to have the full conversation about all the different components, by all means. But you do have professionals on this dais and people watching at home who live in this every single day and can tell you, hey, on the outside, it might look great, on the inside, it could be a million dollar home, but it might need $500,000 worth of work. So.
What's the Mission?
Question for you, Mr. Patrick. One of the other points that wasn't raised here was, Mr. Martin also told us that there was a long list of homes just like this across the city. Do you remember what that number was that he said? It was fairly high. Do, do you remember?
It's 300.
300. So now what we're doing is we're setting a precedent to take money from the General Fund Reserve for Contingency to tear down the beginning of 300 homes. That's not what this General Fund Reserve for Contingency is for. If we want to find the funds to tear down 300 homes, then we need to put it in the budget and vote on it. That's all there is to it. But using the General Fund Reserve for Contingency to tear down 300 homes is not the place where we get those funds. And for the record, for the record, Ms. Reed, I have personally framed and built 30 custom homes.
Okay.
So I, I, I just want to point that out, thank you.
Dr. Wilder?
Just last one. I did not request him to do 299 houses, correct? Just this one particular house?
Just the five homes.
Yes, thank you, appreciate it.
We need to vote on the substitute motion?
Yes.
Let, let us vote on the substitute motion.
Councilmember Farady?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Substitute motion passes.
Yes, sir.
Uh, since we're now entertaining the main point, I'd also like to point out something possibly about what we did in the past. If you go back to the book, Mr. Missions lost his license and a lawsuit, I believe.
Uh, we, we're not, we're not gonna...
We're going to be throwing personal insults.
Yeah, we're not going to entertain.
Let's talk about our professional cloud.
Yeah, personal insults and all, we, we're not going to do that.
I do have a question, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we back to the original or are we moving on?
So now, now you vote on the, uh, new motion, which is to, uh, adopt the budget amendment appropriation with the 116,00160.
Okay, so I make a motion that we adopt the 116,00160.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Farady?
No.
Councilmember Missions?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes 4-3.
Second read, consideration of adopting Resolution Number R-25-006, Amending FY 2025 City, Federal, and State Aid Fund Budget and appropriating 200, 200, $380, I mean, 200,000, $380 to purchase night vision equipment for the police department.
Sir, move. Second.
Any discussion?
No discussion.
Let's vote.
No discussion, okay, Councilmember Farady?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Second read and consideration of adopting resol, number, uh, Resolution Number Dash 25 Dash 007, Amending FY 2025 Physical, I mean, City, State, and Federal Aid Fund Budget and appropriating $35,870 for DUI enforcement activity equipment and training.
Sir, move. Second. No comments.
No comments? Any discussion?
No, sir.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Farady?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Second read and consideration of adopting Resolution Number R-25-008, Amending FY 2025 City, Federal, State Aid Fund Budget and appropriating $58,885 for speed enforcement activity and, equipment activity and equi, equipment.
Second.
Vote. Any discussion?
No, sir.
Wait, wait, vote.
Councilmember Farady?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Second read and consider, consideration of adopting Resolution Number R-25 Dash 009, Amending FY 2025 City, Federal, State Aid Fund Budget and appropriating $89,400 to purchase 79 replacement bulletproof vests for law enforcement.
Sir, move. Second.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Let's vote.
Councilmember Farady?
Yes.
Councilmember Missions?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Closed session.
No, we need to go back to the...
Item, the assessments from Mr. Bandy.
Oh, oh, Mr. Danny, Danny, yes, sir. Yes, sir, good to see you again, sir.
Which one? Okay. Are we good?
Or the end, that's maybe the option.
Oh. Okay.
There you go.
Let's start.
You're the best. And then just click that one. That one, no, no, that one right there.
That one, no, no, that one right there. Yep, perfect. Thank you. Okay, sorry. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, council members. I want to give you a quick overview of the 2025 real estate market and the reassessment. What, why are we doing this exercise? I think some of you, I told you before, the code of Virginia tells us this is what we do in law. So here we are, and we value, ad valorem valuation of property every two years in the city. General reassessments are supposed to be 100% of fair market value. I'll get back to the definition of fair market value in a minute. Again, the code, it specifies basically all the elements of the reassessment process, which property you value, which, which are exempt reassessment cycles, ours are a two year cycle, who does it, the valuation procedure, the records, how it's conveyed to the public, all of that spelled out in the code. The levy, administrative, judicial review is spelled out in the code, how that's handled, and as well as board of equalization process. Getting back to the market value, we're, we're kind of very, market value is our driver. We want to know, is the, a sale arms length? Is, is it the motivation, the buyer seller equal? Is there, you know, there's no duress that, but most people would come at the, at the same conclusion if they were, you know, under any circumstance, you know, a reasonable sales price is there. And that, that's the ones we are looking at as market value, and it's gonna give us an indicator of market value for a given neighborhood or property type. So that's really important. We, we have three methods of valuation that we value, create mass valuation models. There's a cost approach, which is a sticks and bricks kind of thing, which is, you know, contractors use that a lot to give you an estimate for your renovations or additions. Sales comparison approach, that's very much like what you would get when you refinance or buy a home, you get a fee appraisal from an appraiser. That's what we rely on the most for residential, is a sales comparison approach. And then finally, there's an income approach that we really use for what income producing properties. And that's really a function of what investor is looking at, the net operating income of a property, cash they throw off, and what kind of return they want in their money. And that's how they determine how much they pay for that property. Getting into the part of the matter, the 2025 reassessment, this is a value change from the 2024 land, land book. Overall taxable values are nine bit, at nine billion, about 15.5 increase. Exempt values went up substantially, a lot of its growth, new construction, and the total base went up 12.3%. And we'll get into a little more detail. Here's an overview of the map and the various wards and the percent change, the, the median value cha- change in the neighborhood. The, all of them are residential, except for, there's one at 11%, which is the central business district downtown, and then 8% is the Fifth Street Commercial Core. All the other districts are just residential in nature. So as you can see, still, still a very healthy market overall. Getting into residential, residential values went up on average 20%. The interesting tidbits that I'm finding that, you know, the product type is changing where it used to be single family detached was the norm in the city. Now, we're kind of moving more to, especially you'll see with new construction, a lot of townhouses attached, single fa- attached, single family homes are being built, because that seems to be what people want and the price point they're able to afford. So there's a lot of activity in that point. The median price point on all property, residential property types has really moved substantially. I'll show you a chart in a minute to show you that dramatic move over the last four years. And then for now, surprisingly, the market's still resilient and it's, it's holding up. I think a lot of that's simply supply and demand still out of balance. There's way more demand than there is product available, so that's kind of keeping prices up. Here's a chart, I think, you know, it's kind of, you know, looking at your, at your leisure, just the, the progression of single family detached over this four year period, the median price. So it's pretty substantial increases, no surprise there, but if you're buying it, it's kind of a big deal. So, and that's, that's where we are in the, in Lynchburg. Multifamily, still quite strong, values went up 21%. What we're seeing here is, you know, no surprise, rent went up substantially since COVID. Rents drive value. The, the higher the income, the, hopefully the better, the more not, net operating income, the more people are willing to pay for apartments. It's considered a fairly low risk investment. And, and in our, in our fair city, we've had a lot of substantial, really high apartment sales of, of various types of property, different age brackets, and, and we still have a really strong demand for it, as, as you will see, all the new apartment projects are coming online in the city. Just refer, we, we send out income and expense survey forms to income producing properties to get them to, to report their income and expense data to us. We use that in the analysis of our valuation. We had a 16.79% return rate, and almost all of that was affordable housing, because we have to value it for what their rents are, they're not necessarily market rents, they're below market rents, and the state requires us to consider their actual rents and their actual expenses. They reported, almost all the rest of the private market was solid. We got, we, we had no return, no data from them, so we extracted from other sources. Commercial values still holding up. I think, I don't know if the commissioner or revenants talked to you yet, but, you know, or maybe Donna, but, you know, sales, things are still flat, retail sales are kind of flat right now, but the commercial values are holding up, overall a 3% increase. I mean, if you look at, there's really not a lot of new products come online, it's commercial. There has been some new product that's kind of replaced existing or repurposed space, but not a whole lot of new, and I think that's, that's helped us a lot, because there's no new product, so it's kind of kept stabilized the market in the, overall. Again, we sent out income expense surveys to them, and we got a pretty low return. One tidbit is just, I think, I don't know if this will come before you, but we've got some really old retail centers that are at the end of their useful life. I mean, it would be really nice to see a redevelopment plan filed on some of those, because they're no longer throwing enough income to really justify even the cost of the land. So that's just something maybe you'll be cognizant of, or when you see that, I guess we're running out of land. And so instead of tearing down or clearing out more land, why don't we use underutilized sites that are in the city, especially in, in the inner city area, that we want to revise the area and just redevelop those sites? So it's just something to keep in the back of your mind, to think about. Industrials doing quite well, up 7.7%. I mean, you, you all know, you've been to the, the grand openings or the cutting ceremonies of the Framatone, Delta Star, there's, you know, there's these different market forces are going on that are really maybe on, bringing a lot of industrial capacity back to the states, which is a great thing, in that we're getting some benefit from that, you know, Delta Star, the, you know, the infrastructure, the electrical supply infrastructure is so outdated, and Delta Star is benefiting from that with the new systems they build. As far as new product, most of it's kind of a little small, small user space that's coming online, where, which is great, because a lot of our small businesses are, are renting a little small space in an industrial park, which is the only place they can really operate an industrial thing, where they have things sitting outside, industrial zoning that allows that. So that's really good, because in my mind, those are incubators for businesses that grow over the long term, so that, that's exciting to me. Let's see. Again, you know, there are a lot of uncertainties in the market. I am worried about the market, where, where we're going from here. Of course, you know, mortgage rates are the big, a big driver of affordability. You all know that, I mean, when, once rates went from three to seven, that took a bunch of folks out of the market. So that, that's troubling, is about, is about whether someone can afford a home. You know, the other things are just, you know, the best, basically, the federal and state housing policies, how are they going to change? How is that going to affect, you know, grants or whatever, affordable housing, those kinds of things? How's that going to affect us locally? And then, you know, think, maybe I haven't put some things on this chart, but there's construction costs, you know, during the COVID, we had a, material costs went up tremendously. We've got a few tailwinds with, facing us now. We have, you know, the fires in California, or, you know, all that, tariffs, and then maybe even immigration policy. All of those things are going, are going to be, I believe, inflationary for material costs, and, you know, builders have got to pass them to, to the buyer. So I am a bit, a bit concerned about that at long term, about the affordability of housing in the city. But those are just things to be aware of. And then, of course, site development, it's really expensive to develop sites in the city. Site development costs, I mean, you buy the dirt, maybe that's just a third of the cost, then you have to put the roads in, if you're in, we're in the hill cities, you have to move the dirt around, have to put the storm water retention ponds in, things of that sort. So all those things give me long term concerns about the real estate market. But for now, as you can see by the numbers, we're, the market's holding up, it's, it's doing quite well. But my crystal ball is, is quite cloudy about what, what it's going to look like in the future. Again, you have all the tools you need to use to, to figure this all out, I guess, with the public discourse and that kind of thing. I'm just here to report, I'm following the market, this is what I found. Thanks.
Mr. Danny? Oh, Greg?
Jeff, I believe you have one more slide.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, sorry. The, the important part. Oh, yeah. Okay, all right. Assessment notices are gonna, the plan is to mail them out about February 28th. The review period mandated by the statutes in the city code is March 1st to March 31st. The property, when I mail the notice, anybody who gets a change in value will get a notice of change of assessment. In the, in that package, they'll have a paper copy of a review form, if they'd like to file a paper copy. Also, we'll direct them to an online form that can file an electric copy for review, so really, they click a couple buttons and that's all they need to do, oop, pardon, to ask about, the, the, the question of that, you know. Couple things to mention, like, there's some, there's some criteria for questioning that. One is, there's a factual error in your property, and that would direct, you know, encourage everybody to go to our product called Parcel Viewer. It tells you what we have as your, your, you know, your house is built, we have a sketch, the footprint of the house, the finished square footage, we probably have a fairly recent photo of the house. Look at all that, see if it's correct, see if the acres are correct. If you have a factual error, that's an easy fix. We, you know, if we have a factual error, we need to talk. The other is, if you feel like your house is, or property is more than market value, tell us why, but, you know, at, you know, but certainly that's, that's a, a nice place to have a discussion. You know, you can educate us on that. We don't get in your home, we don't know what the condition of your interior home is, we can only guess or estimate that based on the facts we have. And the other is, it's not equalized with like properties, like, there's another brick house right down the street that's exactly like yours, it's, they're exactly the same. They should be valued very closely. Those are the three main criteria that we can work with easily and, and come up with some kind of amicable solution. So those are the things. And again, the Parcel Viewer is that, really that tool. The other thing is, they can say, well, what, you know, what sales did you look at? The Parcel Viewer, you literally put in your address, and you push that tab that says sales, and it'll give you every sale in the neighborhood we looked at. Now, it gives you every sale, not necessarily that sales are most relevant to you, but they give you all the sales. And you can do an advanced search, and you can say, well, I have a two story colonial built in 1950, I wanted to see the sales that sold of two story colonias like mine, and then they were sold, that were built in that range. You can do that with our, our Parcel Viewer product, and download the Excel file and check the data and see if it looks like we're in line. But those are the essential elements, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, have any questions?
Mr. Danny?
Thank you very much for your time and your, and your efforts on behalf of our city. I know it's sometimes thankless work, but I do appreciate what you do. I had a question, because I once purchased a house that had foundational issues. And when I inherited that house, not inherited, but when I purchased it, I spent a few thousand dollars to repair, and last I saw, I bought it for about 135,000. And after repairing the foundational issues for a couple thousand, I last saw it sold for almost half a million dollars, which blew me away. This was, it's not in Richmond, in Lynchburg, it was in Richmond area.
Gotcha.
But, you know, given that there are such disparities, and, you know, you have things like foundational issues, which we've talked about, that don't show up, and may be fixable, may not be fixable, but sometimes they are. Would you say you, in your assessments, are able to determine whether a house has that kind of issue?
No, that's, that, those are hard to discover, unless you can actually see a shift in the outside of the house, where the brick is broken or something like that. I mean, if there's a crack, a major crack in the foundation of the, of the basement, we, example, we, in Fort Hill, we recently saw a house, and we said, oh, that's really sold, sold fairly cheap. And anyway, the people came in and said, you know, you know, your, your assessment's higher, and I think if you come look at it, you'll understand why you, you're, so we went and looked at it, and we had a major foundation issues with the property. We could have never, we couldn't see that, I mean, we were only allowed to look at it from the road, you know, so we couldn't see that. So that, that would be a factual error, that if they brought it to my attention, I would certainly want to, you know, remedy that by going out and physically inspecting it.
Yeah, mine were very visible from a half mile away.
Okay.
It wasn't there when I purchased it, and I was able to remedy it, but you could literally see the cracks going all the way across the front of the house. But today, it's selling quite well.
Excellent, good question, yeah.
Mr. Missions? Could you go back to slide seven, please? Someone with a map on it?
Sorry?
The one with the map?
Okay.
So, I mean, if you could just kind of walk through what you've got, you're showing...
The, the green would be basically the Boonsville Road area, the blue would be like Randolph College area.
Could you talk about the, the difference in the percentages there that are on that map?
Sure. I, I think most of it's a matter of price point, is where, where, what's really happening is down here, 24% over on Fairview Heights, well, I mean, it's really, you can buy a house there, flip it, and fix it up and make quite a bit of money. Whereas, you know, it's hard to flip a $500,000 home, or a $600,000 or $700,000 home over in Boonsville Road to make money on that. I think that's really what's driving values there.
So, but can you, can you actually speak to those percentages? So like, when you're looking at that, what does that say for Fairview Heights, the percentage increase is?
That's the median percent increase in the assessment.
24%, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So 24% for Fairview Heights?
Yes, sir.
And, and that's, that's above the, what was the overall assessment increase? The, the, like, the, for the whole state, average for the whole city?
15% overall.
15%? So, and is that looking at residential when you're looking at that 24%?
Those are strictly, these are strictly residential, other than the two, I was mentioning previously, of the downtown and the Fifth Street Core, it's all residential.
So, so what we're looking at specifically then, like, we look at these, you know, purple areas on the Timberlake Corridor?
Right.
Both sides, Ward 3 and 4?
Yes, sir.
We're looking at 30% increases there. Does that include multifamily, or is that single family?
No, multifamily, only single fam- or resident, no multifamily.
So no multifamily, so this is specifically, you're looking at 30% assessment increases on, so it's double what the average is on the residential, single family homes?
Right.
Right? Wow. That's, that's a big, that's a big spike. And then, and then it looks like it's the same in the Fort Hill Corridor, 30%?
Yes, Fort Hill is the same, yes.
And I would ima- is that demand driven, is that what that is?
It's, it's demand and price point, you know, you, you can still buy a nice home, you know, in the $200,000 to $300,000 range in Fort Hill. And so anything that goes in the market, I mean, it goes.
And, and, and those are probably more common, I would imagine, where, where we're hap- where, I guess where we're having those large increases. Is that the majority of the homes?
Yes, the majority, like, the sales volume is really happening in the 300,000 and less.
Okay.
You know, once you get into the 400, 500, things drop off precipitously.
So, so would it be, would it be safe to say that the majority of our single family homeowners, the people that are in single family homes, are going to get hit with the biggest percentage increases on their reassessment?
Yes, that's fair, that, it, the, the residential went up the most, 20% overall, yeah.
And, but, but, you know, we're looking at some of these are 30%.
Yep, some of the, some of the neighborhoods.
Which is double the, double the citywide average.
Yes.
Wow.
And again, I'm following the market, I'm not, I'm not really establishing the market, it's what your neighbor paid for that house. They're, they're establishing the market, I'm kind of just following it.
Got it. And I think, Mr. City Attorney, the, the, as far as the, what triggers a public hearing, is it, is it 1% or what is it when the, when the total increase goes up for the real estate tax revenue?
I think that is the number, I think it's 1%. And in this, I mean, this one will require a public hearing.
So this is going to require a public hearing for a tax increase?
Yes.
Okay. And the one percent triggers it, but, but, so what we're looking at, and it would, I guess if we equalize the rate, then it wouldn't be a tax increase, is that right?
As far as your budget goes, yes. But some people, you know, some people would still see an increase. Some, some, you know, would, you know, overall, that some people could see an increase.
So these people in the single-family homes that are getting hit with a thirty percent increase would still get hit with fifteen percent?
I'd have to do the math.
Real estate tax increase if we equalize the rate?
Yes. They would still more likely, more than likely.
So they're going to be writing bigger checks, even if we equalize? Single-family home occupants. Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Mr. Frawdy?
You said these numbers were derived from the median, not the average.
These are, these are, I'm sorry, these are me, these, I'm sorry, these are averages. I'm sorry, these are averages.
Okay.
The other chart I showed you earlier was the median.
Okay. Forgive me, because I, I heard, you know, thirty percent average, whatever, and I wanted to make sure, because like, that would be very different.
Yeah.
Okay. In what I'm experiencing, I'm, this is relatively spot on.
You're in, you're in real, you sell real estate, so is this what you're seeing?
I'm trying to avoid what I say directly, to not use this platform to benefit. However, I would tell you, in my experience, this is pretty accurate.
Okay.
So I do commend you for that.
That's fair, thank you.
And everything you've offered, especially about Fort Hill, is spot on, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any more discussion? Mr. Wilder?
Thank you for the presentation, I really appreciate the information. You know, I look at, I moved out of my house in Fort Hill about eight years ago, and when I look at what they, what is on the market again?
Yes.
It has been, it has flipped three times. And it hurts my heart to see how much they're selling it for. It makes me so angry, but it is what it is. I just, I wish I could have kept it, but I had, I need the money.
Yes, sir.
What is the average increase price we might be looking at per home?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The average increase price we might be looking at, as far as increase, is the average kind of?
Well, I think this chart here is going to, this tells a lot. See, here you're, I mean, you know, pretty much, these are median increases from one year to the next, for single-family, townhouses, but, you know, these are the median price. And I, I think that's the most representative. Or you just talk about just Fort Hill?
As far, no, no, right. As far as the tax rate we're looking at, increase.
Oh, I mean.
If it stays the same, like, two and a half dollar increase over the year?
Oh, yeah.
We can get that information for you, that one.
Right.
I just think it's good, so people get too alarmed.
Yes, sir.
I think it's good to kind of get an idea.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
To be able to understand it a little better. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Timmer?
Sure.
When is the new assessment data going to go live on Parcel Viewer? I think it was on the slide.
It's going to go out when the notices, probably, if we mail the notices February twenty-eighth, it will go live that Saturday.
Okay.
But as soon as the notices are released from best-nailing services, we will put them live on the Parcel Viewer.
Thank you, Mr. Bandy.
Of course. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ms. Reed?
This is for your protection. Don't shoot the messenger. This is just his job. He's a good man. He's just doing his job. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
He was hired to do this, and thank you for doing a job that not everybody loves that you do, but we know it's a necessary one, so.
Thank you.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Now, close session.
Closed meeting, discuss the disposition of publicly-held real property, namely property owned by the city, that may sell, sold for economic development purposes, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the city pursuant to section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A three of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, and consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the investment in public funds in connection with a project, with a private party, where competition or bargaining will be involved, where if made publicly initially, the financial interests of the city would be adversely affected pursuant to section two-point-two dash thirty-seven-eleven A six of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, and consideration of closed meeting to discuss possible resolution of two pending city lawsuits pursuant to sections two-point-two thirty-seven-eleven A seven and A eight of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, and consideration of a closed meeting to discuss the appointment for counsel representation to a board or commission, the Central Virginia Transportation Planning Organization pursuant to section two-point-two thirty-dash thirty-seven-eleven A one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended.
Do I have a motion for a closed session? Someone?
Second.
We are now in a closed session.
Councilmember Timmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilder?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes.
We are now in a closed session.